Welcome, Brian. The first thing on the agenda is to reorganize and we need a new chairman first. Do I hear any nominations?
A new one or can it be an old one?
It can be anybody, but you've got to nominate somebody.
I'll nominate Paul Hartshorn.
You're the second. Motion's made and seconded that Paul Hartshorn be the chairman. Any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Next is the vice chairman.
I nominate Kelly Mazer.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded that Kelly be the vice chairman. Any other nominations? Not? All in favor of Kelly? Aye. So carried. Thanks, Kelly.
Yep.
That's all that we've got to do. We need to do the paper record. Yep, so we, um, yeah, we could do that. We have, if you want to do the two other business items, we had thought we'd maybe reschedule them to your next meeting. Just do chair and vice chair and the essentials. But if you wanted to designate a paper or record and adopt the meeting schedule that was worn under that item number one.
Let's just take it.
You want to just take care of them. They're the only two items and then we can come back and look at the rules and regs and conflict of interest policy when we've returned to something approaching normal.
Do that later.
So the paper record has been and is recommended to continue to be the Valley reporter.
I make the motion that it be the Valley reporter.
Second. Motion made and seconded that the Valley reporter be the paper record. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. So carried.
Valley reporter, paper record. So the other one was the schedule that was in your original packet. It's second and fourth Mondays per usual with two months that are the exceptions, April and May. The reason for May is that the Fourth Monday is Memorial Day. The reason for April is just when you sort of figure out the meeting spacing. Makes some sense to move those to the first and third as well and keeps us about on in every other week.
The rest is the same.
The rest are second and fourth. January's still blocked out as every Monday. And then two in February, night before town meeting, town meeting, which will be March 2nd, I believe.
And the plan is to meet next Monday as well?
Right now, we're scheduled to meet next Monday. But that may, we'll see if the conversation alters any of that.
I hear a motion to go with the schedule.
I'll make that motion.
I second. It's fine.
Motion's made and seconded that we go with the schedule that's in our packet as was described. All in favor of that motion? Aye. So carried. Public forum. No one here for the public forum? All right. We'll jump right into the coronavirus, I guess.
Well, just maybe one, just to keep us on the right side of all the open meeting stuff under the additional mobile adjustments. If we could just adopt the revised agenda, which strips everything away to be COVID-19.
Make a motion that we adopt the revised agenda.
I second.
Motion made and seconded that we adopt a revised agenda. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. So carried.
Trevor, you emailed that, right?
Yep.
And if, yeah, if anybody needs, I've got an extra one with some scrolling on it.
All right, now I guess we can move on to the coronavirus. And I guess Fred, you're up here on the hot seat. Let's hear what you've got to say.
So maybe if I could just take a second before you go. We are, we've got, we're trying out some conference calling technologies. We've got a couple of folks that look like they're on. Folks are welcome to call in. They can listen. It's a way to ensure participation, but keep it be remote and all our social distancing. So it keeps us on the right side of the open meeting law and the right side of all the public health advice. We are streaming live and we do have email available for someone if they want to submit any kind of feedback or comment that way. And we'll be trying to monitor it. It's the first test run of the conference call, so any glitches, we'll try to work out as we go. We've done this before, but certainly with Keith and Vinnie here, we can try to work through anything that comes up if folks let us know.
Do you want to give that phone number and the email address?
Yeah, I'll give you the two for the, yeah, if you have an email, just email. It'll come to me. That's at townadmin, T-O-N, T-O-W-N-A-D-M-I-N at GMAVT.net. And then for the conference call, there are two access numbers. One is 434-6250. The other's 545-6250. Both 802 numbers. The participation code is 570208. That'll get you into the meeting. Hit pound when you're done with that. Either mute your phone or I can see them up on the laptop. I'll mute them. The idea being that we'll go through all of this conversation, have the board conversation and can open it up to questions, much like we would at a public hearing. And also lets us keep people from trying to jump in at random moments. Maybe keeps a little order to the flow of things. So those are the two pieces that are different from normal.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, could I just interrupt for a second? Just acknowledge that Face and Service Officer Rick Swanson is streaming in. It's Health Officer J.B. Weir is streaming in and maybe teleconferencing. I don't know. Craig Snell, our emergency coordinator, is, I think, both streaming and teleconferencing in. And for folks back home, I'm Jared Cadwell, the Chair of the Face and Select Board. My two colleagues are out of town, but I'm here on behalf of the Select Board and in the spirit of cooperation and collaboration with you folks.
And for the record, I got a phone call from Andrew Cunningham this morning, basically updating me on what Warren's up to and extending open collaboration with them as well, if we have anything to say to them.
Good, because I hadn't got that information.
That's good. Okay, Fred.
Does everybody here know Rebecca?
Yeah, hi.
Rebecca, who are you representing here?
Yeah, which hat are you on?
My name's Rebecca Baruzzi. I work for the Madron Valley Community Fund and that is the hat I'm wearing.
Thank you.
I will be talking tonight about our plans, present and future. And toward the end of the evening, we need to talk about our local emergency management plan. That's the thing we do every year about this time. So we need to get that updated and this would be a good opportunity because I need those, that plan updated to do my work. Rebecca's here to talk about the organization and status of the volunteer groups. And Trevor is going to talk to Continuity of Operation Plans, COOP, and Continuity of Government, COG, how things will roll out for the town offices in the coming weeks. This all started just about a week ago. I started getting traffic on my listserv for the town health officer. And it very quickly switched over to a lot of information coming in from Vermont Emergency Management, PEM. And I very quickly left, for the most part, my role as THO and spending all my time on emergency management. Things were, this whole thing's been very fluid and changing very quickly, sometimes hour by hour. Initially, I talked to Trevor and asked if I could have 20 minutes to quickly brief you up and that's gone by the wayside. One of the first things that I noticed happening was volunteers, volunteers were spontaneously forming groups, which is a wonderful thing. However, one of the lessons learned from, we had from Tropical Storm Irene, that was in my report at that time, lessons learned was that we didn't have good control over the volunteers. Why is that important? Well, one, we need to account for the safety. Safety during Irene for the volunteers was not what it should have been. We're very fortunate, nobody got hurt. The other thing is we didn't capture the volunteer hours, which we could apply towards real money from FEMA. I know that we lost thousands, if not more than that, volunteer hours that we could have used when we applied for help from FEMA. Rebecca called me up early on and we were able to, let me back up. So I wanted to get ahead of the volunteer curve quickly so that that wouldn't happen again. Rebecca called me up. We thought we'd set up a meeting with the folks that were volunteering. She had a group together yesterday. We met at the church with the primary groups, volunteer groups, social service net type groups here in the valley. And we've got a plan put together. It's a valley-wide plan. I appreciate the cooperation we've received from Faceton. I'm pleased to learn about Warren. Because so many of these agencies are valley-wide, it made sense to a lot of us that we'd have just one person in charge. In that, we hadn't discussed our wire diagram and I was in the thick of it. I assumed the role of incident commander right off. And Rebecca has taken control of the volunteers. Let me pass our organizational chart around. There's one for everybody. Which will make a little bit more sense of how we're organizing ourselves. As you can see, the volunteers are in the operations section. And on the second wire diagram, second page, is how the volunteers are presently organized. Rebecca is the unit, where do we go?
Leader.
Unit leader?
Unit leader, thank you. Unit leader for the group. And she's controlling five groups there, which is in keeping with span of control. We probably anticipate groups adding to that. And all of this is fluid for a little bit. So I'd ask Rebecca to brief you all on what the volunteers are doing.
Sure. So for our safety net, we're thinking about our seniors, those with immune compromised systems, as well as our workforce in the tourism and service-related industries. We know they're going to get hit hard. For food, the Interfaith Council is, they've run our food shelf and so they're thinking about working with potentially the Rotary or other organizations to try to figure out how to make the need, meet the demand. So they're meeting on Wednesday with a bigger plan. We haven't seen an increase yet and we're not expecting it for a couple of days, but they will discuss how to meet that and make that plan on Wednesday. The Meals on Wheels folks, they are, I've spoken to Kate Anderson from the Health Center and as well as Chrissy from Meals on Wheels and Rivers. And they plan on having a considerable amount more of people receiving those meals. They are figuring out their plans as well. They currently have the staff. Both these organizations, freewheeling as well, freewheeling is stopping doing as many rides, higher priority only. And they are thinking about getting ready to react to responses like emergency equipment or prescriptions or things like that. So nobody's acting on anything yet. These are all, everybody's ready to grow if they need to. The current need is that because our entire volunteer force, workforce, volunteer force of the valley, it seems to be over 65, we certainly need, we need drivers and prep cooks and things like that. There is a Google doc that is on the Faceton Town Hall, Faceton Town website.
Will soon be.
Will soon be. It's on the Valley Reporter's website under coronavirus. And I can hand it, give it to anybody who else who wants it, but that is the volunteer Google sheet. So if you go on there, you put your name on there, it'll ask you about a skill set or if you're willing to drive or man the food shelf. We're asking everybody to go there so all that information can be in one spot rather than multiple volunteers talking to all the different organizations all the time. So we're connecting, Jess Tompkins is running that list and we will be giving it to freewheeling, Meals on Wheels and Food Shelf as early as tomorrow so that they can start to backfill their needs. Hannah's House is working out a plan about connection. We're definitely nervous about all the people in isolation. As far as emergency money, there are lots of jobs in healthcare right now and I believe that's going to be going on Front Porch Forum, Hands at Home. They have a lot of needs, so as people are being laid off, that's an option. Another option is the, well, besides that, the Community Fund has a shortened grant. So if people are in economic need, we can make that happen quickly, just like with Irene. Any questions?
We do have the link to the Valley Reporter page, since that's the one being updated. We do have that on our website under the main header for all of the coronavirus COVID-19 stuff. So if you look for the reference to the Community Fund, there's a little blue underline link that'll bring you to the page that's, I think, getting updated, probably the one you see her just do earlier.
The Google doc?
If it's available through that page, we don't have a separate doc, but we can link to that too.
So she linked the Community Fund with a little bit of a press release that she wrote, just saying that we were going to be available for emergency grants. But I'll have her put it somewhere more prevalent, that Google doc, and maybe I can send it to you, Trevor. Can it go on your website?
Rebecca, would you also ask Jess to do the same thing? Send the same information to Patty?
Okay.
To Faceton Town Office.
Yeah, it does have the link in the release to the, to a Google doc, it looks like. We can post it wherever you want it, wherever you think it's best.
And then I asked you earlier today about teenagers being able to drive?
Yeah.
For the meals?
Yeah.
And the freewheeling?
Yep, teenagers put their, you know, each, each of these organizations has a, their list of protocols. And it's going to get to a place where it's going to be further and further outside of the organization, you know, a little bit more ad hoc. So I think when we get further down the list, we'll be looking for teenagers, but everybody should go on that, that Google doc.
Okay.
Yep.
Rebecca's also assembling a list of items that the different groups are in need of. And as soon as we get that list assembled, compiled, we'll be trying to find out where we can resource it. One of my first stops will be Vermont Emergency Management for anything that is large in nature. And I'm quite sure a lot of the resources we can probably obtain locally. But as soon as we get it together, then we can start figuring out how we're going to resource their needs. The social net groups are pretty much the primary focus of this emergency for us at this time. I think, it's the only emergency that I've worked on where the road crew wasn't involved. So we'll try to be resourcing them as, as best as we can. Communications, to call in for, for an individual to call in requesting a need, the practice has been calling, has been to call 211. 211 had some issues with connecting people from the valley. I got hold of them this morning and I also put a ticket into Vermont Emergency Management to get that fixed. They did. You can now call 211 and you put on an infinite wait list. So I, I just checked it just before the meeting and that's the way it is now. I called BEM back, told them that we need this system and suggested strongly that they need to resource 211 however they can. Because that's how our people most easily can connect to the resources that they might need in or out of the valley. Initially, I was-
Who do they, how does that work? Who do they relate to? If they get a call from the valley, will they then transfer or send a message to you?
No, so they keep a big database of all the local resources. So if you were to call up there, you would be able to find out that we have an Interfaith Council. Yeah, and so you would tell them, you know, what your, what, what your experience is and what you're looking for. And many of the dispatchers are not that well-versed with all the different organizations, but they will say, okay, well, that's, you know, that sounds like Community Fund or Interfaith. And they'll give those phone numbers and then the person will then make that call.
Initially, I was communicating with the valley using Front Porch Forum. That worked well for a while, but there's a 12 to 24-hour lag on that to getting information out. I am not social media savvy, but Lisa Loomis has volunteered to pick up that item and she's got her website and social media contacts. And we're very grateful that she can get word out to most people very quickly, very quickly. Proof of that is I had a lot of folks call up, email me that they wanted to be here tonight. Thought it was important for them to be here tonight. Lisa put out a message saying, we're teleconferencing, we got it on, we're streaming it, you don't need to come. If you've got any concerns, questions, other than what can be answered here, they can contact me tomorrow. So in that we have nearly no one here tonight, it shows the effectiveness of her work. And we're very appreciative to her. I'm appreciative to Jared for calling me up last night. We had a nice, long conversation about how we can work together and form a valley-wide response to this. Carrie Dolan called me up yesterday afternoon and we spoke at length. She offered any services or help that she's capable of doing. And she was most supportive of what we're doing here. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the EMDs for Faceton, Warren and Moretown here tomorrow night. So we will be pulling the valley-wide plan together a little tightly, more tightly than it is now, so that everybody is read into that. And we will probably talk later about the local emergency management plan. But to date, that's what I have for you in brief. Your questions? Any questions? Feel good? Of course, you can email me anytime with your questions and whatever you've got.
I think, I don't know if this is the right time to address it, but, you know, the big concern is going to be people's cash flow. And I think the town has already started to think about how we can help mitigate things-
And I think the town has already started to think about how we can help mitigate things from that perspective and take that stress off people the best we can. The Water Department has made the decision not to pursue any drastic action, you know, meaning liens or, or...
Shut offs.
Shut offs. I asked Trevor about property tax penalties. Apparently, that is in place by statute, and we're not able to back off on those moves. What else did we talk about? Dog licenses being extended, although we can make that pretty easy for people if they want to pay by check or online and drop things off in the Dropbox. But, you know, I think we just need to keep in mind financial cushioning for folks that are out of work. A lot of the, I know from my business experience today, and actually on the way in here, Governor Scott has asked that all the restaurants and hospitality businesses close for two weeks. So there's a lot of people that are without means to make money, so.
We did talk a little bit. One of, one of the options we could explore, because we can't, and we're pinned in on the late, it's the late penalties and the interest charges that can accrue if you miss a payment. Statute's so rigidly defined, you don't have any flexibility. One of the areas where we might be able to figure something out for different categories of businesses or properties would be through the tax stabilization mechanism. That's more of a long-term recovery kind of an effort than sort of an emergency thing because there's, it's got its own separate process and policy that goes with that. But that's one of the items we can explore as well. And we'll continue to try to get creative to see what's already out there, and what can we access, and what flexibility we have. But if you ever wanted a really good on-the-ground example of why Dylan's rule is maybe not the best way to run the middle road, you're getting it.
Right.
It's really limiting. We were able to work around it to get people to participate, but it took a few loops, swoops, and pulls to get there. And so there's, that limited flexibility, while well-intentioned, makes things challenging in these types of circumstances. I don't know if we want to talk, the closure, you've probably seen and heard, there are many of our municipal kin are, have moved to reduced operations or have outright closed for a while. The memo that's going around right now is essentially how we would move forward in a scenario like that, includes some of the information that we've already heard. This would be if you closed effective tomorrow, essentially at some point. We're fortunate in the fact that we're a small workplace, so a lot of the cross-training is effectively done just as a matter of necessity. But this presumes that if we closed for public access for a period that's similar to, whether it be the restaurants or even the schools, essentially from now to the end of the month, what would that look like? How would we handle that? And it takes you through sort of what we would do internally, some of these ways we would process dog licenses, for example, would be to try to convey information electronically, so by email scan, fax is actually a pretty common way, we get proof of rabies certification. And try to do what we can through those mechanisms. Same thing with water, tax payments, the drop boxes, the mail, there are some options that are there. Phones, when a voicemail is left, there's an automated message that pops up in your inbox, and you can listen to it through your email remotely. So in terms of access to phone, one of the things we thought we'd do was handle it sort of in that demand response, since there is notice. We could eventually move toward direct forwarding of phone calls, but we're trying to sort of limit the public use of private phones. If it's possible, there's no magic in it or requirement, it's just, there's so little of what we do that has an emergency component that that 15-minute lag for somebody who's sort of on-call. It also allows the triage. If you've got three or four different things, you can figure out whatever they go best in. One of the trickier pieces would be access to the vault, and we want to spend a little more time thinking about that. Short-term, it would be if we closed the building to public access, we'd probably more or less shut that off. So that would be, say, through this week if you did, did a closure today. And then for the two weeks after, we try to figure out how to get folks in, you know, whether it be by appointment or some things, you know, Patty in Fiston has sort of laid out sort of how they'll, you know, if you make a request, who will handle certain things, run certain pieces of equipment, to just sort of limit who's, you know, essentially who's touching what. And so there may be some options and some limited hours there, where we start to sort of open back up for certain things at certain times. Presumes that we're going to cancel all public meetings in this building. Some of them do get up closer to that 25-person threshold. The Capstone Tax Preparation Service that's been done out of here brings a lot of folks through. That spend's suspended until April 1st, so Capstone's sort of working through those pieces as well. So those are the kinds of things that would happen. We'd use whatever tools we have to make this public and available, from posting on the doors, posting on the website, changing away messages, for example, to say, we're in a limited service situation, please leave a message, reach out to this, let us know what's up, so we can help you out, and triage the best we can. We may have some employees here in the building that'll work remotely depending. My wife and I both work in local government, and the Montpelier Roxbury Schools are closed until April 6th. So we have folks facing those kinds of challenges too, where they're trying to cover that need in addition to cover the needs of their work life. Because we're small, you can maintain some of those recommended distances. There's likely to be somebody in the building at most times, so it would just be that we'd be in there with the, with the knobs turned, so from an emergency response piece. We all looked at this plan weaving, town staff, road staff, road commissioner, sent it to Fred and Carla as well, so tried to really think through the different pieces. Some of the other pieces is we've set up this conference calling mechanism to ensure if we had to have a meeting, say you wanted to meet regularly or meet, you know, we had to have an emergency meeting, we can let people participate from their homes or other locations as need be. Some of the other, the Road Department, like Fred jokingly said, is one of the few emergency situations that hasn't involved them. They're able to work in a fairly remote, more or less business-as-usual, one person, one truck, which is normally the case. Wipe down pieces of equipment that are shared, those types of things. The library's closed, there's information on their website or by calling that folks can still get books, it'd be curbside delivery, so they've made that call earlier today, effective today. The Water Commission, as John mentioned, is going to be spending some of the shut-off activities to ensure that there's safe drinking and washing water. We're trying to use the website, that one thing, we're just adding things, whether they be contact or updated information, such as how to conference call in. We'll try to use that regularly in terms of our ability and hope that we can broadcast it from there. Some of the more granular things would be, we'd suggest to designate three members for review of warrants electronically, so we'd scan you the whole package, or could set them aside. Paul's one of them, we make sure that there's, that he gets a packet as well. The idea would be that you go through, you'd be able to sign the warrants, we could still process the bills on time, and then we'd essentially ratify that action later when you get together. But it provides a majority of the board looking at all warrants. You see one you don't like, we pull it, figure out if it's something that can wait or something we have to deal with in a different way. As we do in natural disasters, and I think it's contemplated in the emergency management plan, setting a spending limit, so that it's usually been the chair or some other designee. I don't know if you want to extend it, the memo has both of us in there, in a suspected limit. I think above the limit would require more action. In this case, it's $5,000. I don't know what that would be in this context, since we're not talking about infrastructure or anything physical, but there might be smaller things, supplies or other, other things we need to do.
As far as I can foresee, that would be adequate.
Yeah. I debated 2,500 versus 5,000, but there's no magic in it, it's just a sense of upsetting it someplace. And anybody who's sick is encouraged to stay home, and then it would be without any reduction in their paid time off, because we want to actually encourage them, if you're not well, to stay away, to meet some of those requirements, so we don't have people forcing it through. So those are some of the actions.
Would that include sick family?
It could include sick family, yeah. I think, you know, to cover the whole gamut, because this is a bit, it's, it's not, it's sort of an extraordinary public health situation.
Well, if we had a situation where we had to spend more than 5,000, I think we could pull the board at that time and go from there.
Yep.
Probably wouldn't happen, but in case it did, suggest that.
And what's the protocol on that, just so we don't run into any issues? Can that be done by phone or?
We could do it with the conference calling capability, there'd have to be at least one of us physically present. And even though we're encouraging folks to call in or to participate digitally or remotely, we still, under the open meeting law, again, have to, there's still got to be somebody physically available and a chance to physically participate. So it could be as simple as, we've warned it as an emergency meeting, which has different protocols. Everybody calls in, so everybody has access to the conversation at the same time, we'll record it on the digital recorder. And it might just be Paul and I here, though, sitting six to eight feet apart to get authorization. So we'd probably handle it in those ways, or anything that was, that was too great.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Carol, do we, do we need a motion on this, or just accept it, or how do we do this?
I would suggest a motion if you want to accept the plan and institute a closure of the spaces, just so we formalize it. If you want to think about it a little bit tonight before you do that, we can also set it aside and talk about some of the other pieces. This does seem to be the activity others are taking, either in Fuller and Park, we're seeing it now with, I forget who mentioned, the restaurants and other businesses are that way.
Jerry, you got something like this?
It's a shorter version. I did want to add that our next scheduled Select Board meeting is next Monday night, I'm sorry, next Tuesday night. You're meeting this Monday night. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more information that you'll be processing, we'll be processing between now and then, and we'll make sure to keep in close contact.
I guess the only comment I'd make on this plan is, is law, it's important to me that if someone were reaching out to the town government via email or telephone, that someone would be monitoring those lines and be able to respond within a reasonable amount of time.
Yep, yeah, we try to designate, if you're working remotely, keep your email up, and it would be to say, you know, every so often go through. We've also encouraged folks to, when you're in the office, it could be processing, you know, especially if you're in Jen or Sandy's position, where you're processing payments, dog licenses, there are those things that are easier to do. Payroll here, but if you are remote, because we're closed, it might be a chance to, we're saying, think of some of the policy projects, other things that you don't usually have time for because of, of the walk-in business, and this is, for better or worse, kind of an opportune time to take a look at the purchasing policies, one that we were talking about a little bit today. Excuse me. And a few other things like that. So we, you know, think about the types of projects that you could do that would lend themselves to that kind of space, and then focus on the ones that need to be done here when, when, if you're in. And so part of that would be, you know, every, whatever seems like a reasonable time to get back to folks. And then also ask, generally what's not included is here, is we'd be asking everybody for their patience and understanding. There are certain things that would be a little harder to do, and a reduced service footprint.
And there will be somebody in the office that could deal with some emergency things most of the time?
I, I think functionally, yes, there would be. Whether it be, it might just be one of us, and if for some reason we were really reduced, we've talked about, designate somebody as a hub to take sort of the phone calls, and we could steer all the automated messages, kind of point everybody in one direction. At this point, it would still be sort of individual intake and then routing back out.
So you personally can work remotely, right?
I can do most things remotely, yeah, from whether they be email or voicemail and telephone response, certainly some of the drafting, keep a bunch of the templates. It might require a little, we'll work with Henry for some remote, ZBILIO access our networks remotely, but for right now, it might just be some file transfer types of protocols, working from a Dropbox folder, for example, so things are available regardless of where you are.
Now, suppose if somebody wants a building permit, is that going to be possible to get those?
I think it would be possible. It would be, so if we were closed, it might be that somebody calls and says, hey, I want to, I want to put a deck or garage or fence or do something different. And so they'll talk with Annie through it, all right, where's the property, where are you? What zone are you in? What are some of the things? You know, we'll get you a copy, whether it be, we can email it to you, or we can mail it to you, a copy of the, of the application, fill it out. For this project, it would be X amount of dollars, you know, write the check, put it all in the envelope, and either mail it back to us or drop it in the Dropbox. And then we can figure out from there if you need to go to one of the boards, the bodies, and then start to schedule that based on when we think we might be back to, to public events again. That's, that's the wrinkle to sort out, is if you have a DRV situation, but it might just be using some of these remote tools and, and setting it up that way to the extent possible.
Well, I was just thinking that if we could keep that moving along, that it would also help the, well, the workers and lumber companies up here that needed to, I'm sure they're going to be hurting from business for a while.
Yeah, we want to try to retain some sense of access and normalcy while cognizant of, one of the key responses to this is keep your distance from as many people as possible.
Yeah, there may be a lot of people home, out of work, and opportunity to build that deck that's been on the list for a couple of years.
Oh, which, you know, it could happen, yeah.
And we've still, if you go back to when we had our interim period, you know, you appointed Annie as the zoning administrator, and for some reason, I was able to be in, and Annie was unavailable. I'm still on the books as the assistant. So in that, in that deck situation, certainly if it's anything grander than that, we'd kind of push away from it. But if we had a real need to try to move things through, we've got some overlap. Same thing with payroll, Jen and Sandy are pretty well cross-trained for each other's stuff. There are certain elements that we'd have to work on.
How about the land records? It seems like that's one that hadn't quite gotten figured out.
Yeah, and it's just, we want to, we've, we've got some folks out of town, just want to keep talking through. Does it make sense to have set hours? Does it make sense to do it by appointment? Is there something in, Fiston's small, the hybridize, which is, send us as much as you can on the front end, and we'll try to get it to you either digitally or pull it, while making sure we stop short of performing any title searches or any of the legal other work that we don't want to necessarily get into. So that's the piece where we're sort of saying, that might come along just a little bit later. And it's really just to make sure with Jen and Sandy, if we're going to commit you to some level of public access, you know, what are you, what are you comfortable with? Because they're the two that can really help on that end.
Any comments?
Did you say by appointment only? Was that an option?
We talked about maybe by appointment or setting, almost like a college professor sets some office hours, and still encourage folks maybe to call ahead and make appointments so we can limit the flow, or at least manage the flow, I should say. But so all those options might be on there. We've talked for a lot of years about digitizing land records.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
And that would be pretty nice. And we'll try to steer people to, we'll make sure the link is prominent, steer people to the online tax map system that is ready to go, at least enough to help folks through this. There might still be little individual issues with it, but would give folks a good start. So that if they need in the butters list, we can walk them through that on the phone. You know, click on these and hit print, and there you go, you've got it.
Do you have more comments, Brad?
I did invite Kaya Korb to be here tonight to discuss the schools, but she's very busy, had to beg off. I failed to mention that Rebecca's also the Public Information Officer for us, PIO. She's been coordinating with Lisa with our messaging, which is a big help.
Is our school still open?
No.
No?
It closed.
Did?
Today was the day we closed, until April 6th, if not further.
And that's based on the governor's, it was no later than Wednesday, I think.
Yeah, and ours just became in-service days today.
I think it actually closed today, though, I don't know.
I think in Montpelier, one of the few that had the two-hour delay, it's scheduled for that tomorrow. When I dropped the kids off this morning, I bet you two-thirds of the kids were missing.
Yeah.
It was, it was eerie.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this, Brad?
Future plans?
Before we do that, I do have, I have a handful of things that came in via email, believe it or not. We did this for three years at my last spot, I don't think anybody ever emailed us, except for department heads. So just first, you referenced Carrie and Maxine, they sent a note to let everyone know they're available to assist, they're putting information in the paper, Front Porch Forum, via the chamber. Also here to field any questions folks may have, en route them to the legislature and state agencies, also in touch with select boards. Please know the legislature is working in close collaboration with the Scott administration on all matters. Tom Meheron sent in, as one of the few businesses in the valley deemed necessary, Meheron Supermarket is looking to fortify our staff. Good pay, great history. We're trying to fill the void. Come fill out an app or email us at pruce@meherons.com. Jim Taber sent one. Jim Taber sent one, San Francisco today ordered 7 million residents stay home, sheltering in place. We're obviously not San Francisco, but can you discuss any scenario based on your experience whether a similar order might be issued for our region? And then Chris Harmon, I didn't, Chris Harmon, some sort of program available through the local EMT that may help a regular citizen become an asset community in a situation that locals may be of assistance in a state of emergency. And then in quotations, crash course of basics. And the two of them are interested in helping if needed.
Yeah, speaking of Muhirons, it might be worth just noting, I saw on Front Porch Forum, that they're trying to limit their morning hours to most vulnerable folks.
Right.
Be good for folks to know that. Get the word out.
Yeah.
I think for the sheltering in place and those types of larger decisions, we'd probably look, I don't know that it's something that you'd decide as a local body unless there was something really unique. This would come from, this would be an executive order level decision.
From the governor.
In consultation, yeah, with all the relevant agencies and departments, so.
But, but if we all of a sudden detected something specific to us, we can order that if we have an emergency declaration, which is something I wanted to discuss. If you want to volunteer, you volunteer online by?
The Google Doc, which will, I will send to both Patty and Travis, will be on the town websites, but right now it's on the Valley Reporter website.
So for folks that want to volunteer, list what your capabilities are and what you'd like to do. And we've got one person, Jess.
Tompkins.
Tompkins, thank you. That's just what she's doing, is taking in requests and matching it to people who have volunteered.
And what do you guys see as the most in-need volunteers? Drivers or food preparers or?
Yes.
Disappointed strivers and food shelf. So a lot of those volunteers have, you know, said they can't do their duties anymore, which is good, and they're at home. So just to keep our normal operations going, we need more volunteers. That's before we start getting this major influx. But, but yeah. And Meals on Wheels and Free Willing, they both have some rules with driving, clean driver's record. You know, they have a mechanism in place for that, which would be through Nancy Emery and Michael Bransfield. But just go to that Google Doc, and we'll sort people to the appropriate agencies, appropriate organizations where they, their volunteer talents be the best.
So the meals will still be prepared at the senior center?
So they're still preparing the meals there, and they have canceled the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday community meals. They're thinking about ways of still making those meals, but then doing maybe a curbside delivery. They'll, they'll report out on that if they're, they're able to do it. But as of right now, they are going to continue to do Meals on Wheels, the way they've always done it, deliver to people's homes. They'll put some protocols in place of, you know, leaving it on the stairs or whatnot. Each, each group is kind of working their own protocols. The food shelf is talking about somebody coming to the door and telling them what they want, and then them grabbing the food and bringing it out to minimize handling. But as we go along, we figure out what works and what doesn't work, probably change a lot of those things.
And being emergency management, we always, I always think about worst-case scenarios. So something we probably should start thinking about is if we lose town staff for whatever reason, whether they themselves are sick and have to stay home, or they have someone at home that can find some to be at home and take care of one. So we need to start thinking of continuity of government replacements for our, our town people. My suggestion is that each town person think about this, think who they would like, who were capable to assume their duties, and discuss it with that person if they'd be willing to come in and perform those duties. Obviously, it won't be to the same level, but we have to maintain our government operations here. So I would make that suggestion.
And what about you? Do you have a second that isn't Carla that would stand in in your position?
I think I'll, that's a good, that's a good point. I hadn't thought of it. I should have. Carla's my deputy. She's, we share knowledge right back and forth. We know what's happening. I guess what I would do is tomorrow, when I'm talking with the EMDs, is we'd come up with some sort of succession.
That'd be great.
Between towns, perhaps?
Yeah, yep, yep. We want to go into the L E M P.
If you guys are ready, yeah.
For what?
There's a few other pieces Fred has that are specific to, let me just unmute the folks on the conference call for a minute, see if maybe, anybody has any questions there? To the folks on the phone, do you guys have any questions?
I'm good so far, thanks.
To the folks on the phone, do you guys have any questions?
Right now, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'm good so far, thanks.
Didn't know we were doing this in a round, did we?
Hey, this is what I want. Echo, echo.
No questions from anybody else, Fred?
You all have, you all say?
Well, I kind of got some questions, but what are the other things we're going to do here, so I don't double up on stuff?
In terms of the COVID-19?
Yeah.
Fred's got some items that relate to a potential emergency declaration, the emergency management plan, and how those pieces tie in together with a situation report and the chart you handed out. And then it would be if you want to adopt the recommendations in the memo or amend them and adopt them or hang on for later, whatever the case may be.
All right, I got a couple of questions then. Do we have finances available to get started with additional people that may go onto Meals, Meals on Wheels that don't have the money? And are we able to finance that?
We have safety net organizations that will be able to handle that, and when they are not, I'm sure, you know, we'll talk about it. Each of the, each of the, you know, websites for the food shelf and the Meals on Wheels and Free Willing have all got places where people can donate, you know, once we get to the point where we need to start doing some fundraising. We're fine now.
Are we thinking about having a command center? Did I miss that somewhere?
Good point. With the Emergency Operations Center, ELC, we're doing it remotely from our house.
You're good with that, huh?
Very, yeah. Actually, it's more efficient. We have everything right there. Since everything's being conducted with email and telephone, it works well.
You know, you're asking for additional help, like at the food shelf or cooking, is there going to be protection for people who work in that kind of an environment?
Yeah, and so we're really trying to streamline the request so that Google Doc, all the people that are going to volunteer are going to go through that. Those will be broken into people who can do food prep or driving or different categories. Those lists will go directly to people from Food Shelf, Free Willing, Meals on Wheels. Their coordinators will then call those volunteers and schedule them. They will do training, and they will go through protocols. So I called Kate Anderson from the Health, from Metta Valley Health Center today to try to get the latest protocol, and they're constantly changing for them, you know, in the healthcare system. So we're just going to keep up with whatever the health department's got at the latest.
What happens if we find a couple of cases of COVID-19 in the valley? What do we, what do we do? Do we tell everybody? What do we, what do we do? Well, I mean, we're trying to avoid it, but if we don't, and someone gets it, what do we, what do we do?
Follow the guidelines from Vermont Department of Health. Whatever they say is what we do. I assume it'll be stay at home.
Yeah.
Shelter in place. But whatever, when someone comes down with this, they're given some very strict guidelines on what they can and cannot do. So it's very, it's very much a VDH issue. Us as a town government don't really have to worry about it.
Do you ever foresee a need to press our school shelter in place?
No, I don't know if it would.
You want quite the opposite.
Yes, we'd want to keep people away from that. If we for some reason needed additional, if someone has it, they're going to be at home. It's just that simple. That's all I got.
I wouldn't think you'd want, have to activate the shelter. That'd be the worst thing you could do, probably bring more people into, like Fred says, I think home is the best place to be.
Yeah. VDH will tell the individual, and we'll find out. And that's what we do, what they say. Do I understand that you're in agreement that we should probably start looking for replacements for town staff?
Well, I know I could help with the, you know, front treasury and clerk stuff.
Of course. You've done that.
And yeah, and I know our software system, so.
Then I would ask you to coordinate with Sandy and let her know that in case.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an extraordinary situation, but I'd kind of hate just to have folks recruit their own replacement without, you know, some kind of coordination and some experience that we're aware of, so.
Yeah.
Well, do you see any cross-train or cross-fertilization from Facen or coming in here and we going there and vice versa with our people? Would that be possible?
Each town has probably got their own set of similar circumstances.
Yeah, I think what's working effectively thus far is that Trevor and Cindy and Patty are in constant contact, or so it seems, and.
Can be, yeah.
Yeah, can be. And the protocols that you're adopting are somewhat different than what we're adopting, but it's, as we've already said, the situation is really dynamic. You know, if you guys have, for example, a staffing need, that's something that maybe we can, I can ask Patty about, you know, who do we have in Facen who has local, local government experience that is perhaps retired? For example, we have one of our election clerks as a form, this year was a former town clerk, I forgot, elsewhere in the state of Vermont, I had no idea. A person was here in the valley, and he turned out to be a great help to us. So we need, perhaps we need to do a little research on that, but I think, I think we have thus far shown to be pretty resourceful, so.
It's worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I think in terms of, for the front of the house, town clerk, treasurer stuff, having, say, Kelly and Janet Smith in town, Janet, I think, still probably.
Beautiful.
Handle some of the recording, for example, if she was available and interested. It might be a little easier there. It gets a little harder when you get to Annie and I. And it might just be figuring out what the right pieces are to break off and maybe split them out that way. Or there is a group of retired managers and administrators out there that maybe could fill in remotely, for example. It tends to be an older demographic. So I don't know that you'd want them in place, but some of the activities might be familiar.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, that a great online resource for our towns has been the MuniNet. And I know protocols for office procedures in this situation, I know there's been a lot of information shared between the towns. So anyway, I think we're making our way through it.
Yep, that sounds good.
Anything else?
Okay, but you want to go on to the emergency plan? Does everybody have?
You guys, I think you guys need to get down into it. And I, my understanding is you're meeting with Craig and the Warren. All right. And your name is?
Jeff.
Jeff, good to meet you, Jeff. So you guys are meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Here, forward.
Terrific. Look forward to the report.
Okay.
Keep it moving.
Appreciate your assistance.
Oh, you bet.
Call me in the morning.
And I will, I'm going to call you, right, and email you.
You got to call.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Jared. See you.
See you.
Good luck.
All right, Fred, we'll move on to.
Yeah, does everybody have a copy of the?
Yes.
L E M P?
L E M P. Coming down there.
It's like a two-page document. Oh, it's coming down, okay. It is almost identical to last year, except for a couple of personnel changes that I've put in. Now that we have a vice chair, that information will have to go in. And I think there's one other spot in there that I was waiting for tonight, find out who that person would be.
Where do we see that?
I think most of it's self-explanatory as you look through. If you have any questions on any one portion of it, please let me know. And it is somewhat of a fluid document. We need to have it approved and submitted to the RPC this month anyway. But if we decided to change something, it's nothing more than you folks agreeing, voting to agree on whatever that change is.
We don't have any municipal systems like a sewer plant that we, that would have critical personnel. Am I, is there anything else besides the water system that I'm missing?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And the water operator, Simon, let's see if I can find it real quick, did send out a message today, essentially assuring that they're creating some of those continuity of operations measures as well. So if something happens with our primary operator, one of their other folks could step in.
Has GMP sent out any notices on that stuff, too?
Not that I've seen.
I haven't seen anything.
Yeah. So Simon, multiple layers of redundancy, keep all our systems operating normally. They have more than 20 knowledgeable and experienced operators. They have plans in place to make sure your system operates as expected, should anything affect our operator. And we get more details of that, but they sent that as a sort of a reassurance. We still do have a need to expand ICS training and certification for folks. We've got a few folks who are, I think, Paul and I maybe on this end. I don't care, remember, Cal, if you do.
I started it today. I've got a couple hours on.
Yep. Most excellent.
Sounds good.
Yep.
And some of it you could do online, right?
The ICS 100, which is really the one I recommend, is two or three hours online.
Yeah.
That's what they say.
Yeah, I mean, I was getting interrupted, but I was going through, and then I hadn't got to the exam yet, but there were questions throughout.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. Started that.
That is an important item. They have as many ICS trained people, select board members, as possible. Because any FEMA document requires one or two select board person's signature, and it can only be, to qualify, you have to have the FEMA training.
Can you explain a little bit of what this is? I'm not familiar with the ICS training program or certification.
Yep, yep. It's the Incident Command System. It's a system whereby you organize a emergency. It was developed by the fire service many years ago. It easily models the military system of four sections to take care of things with a hierarchy here. The training is through FEMA. They have an online FEMA school, if you will, independent study school. Sign on, excuse me, enjoy. You sign on and select the course and. Sign on, excuse me, enjoy. You sign on and select the course and you can become versed in any one subject that FEMA has courses for. The one I'm recommending here is the I S 100, which is the basic. It tells you how the system basically is glued together.
And that's what you're doing, Kelly?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. I don't remember the I S 100, but it was the Incident Command System education, so.
Yep. I S 100 C.
Okay.
Yep. They have a lot of different courses there. I took one this last weekend on pandemics, Incident Command System in pandemics, and how to do the coupon car. And it was, I thought it was good. It was an hour, hour and a half, and now I can somewhat versed in their knowledge, in their lingo. Yep. So if there's no, not to steal your thunder, Chair.
I need to, I need to make a correction here on the page seven. Does this go somewhere or is this just for us?
No, it goes to the Regional Planning Committee Commission, and then it's forwarded on to B E M. This is a document that they refer to when they want to contact Waitsfield. And they can bring this up and see basically how we're organized for an emergency.
On the drinking water utility, Robin Morris is the chair. And you got telephone number for him? I do.
If you know it off the top of your head.
Yeah, eight oh two four nine eight seven three seven nine. Sure, that's his cell.
Your young memory kicking.
Are these our copies or are you?
Yes.
These are our copies?
Yes.
Well, you've got a copy just like it that you've got to fill in, or?
I don't have it with me tonight.
I
I can make the notes here, too, yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to get his email?
It is. Yeah, I can add his email and add your newly, duly-elected vice chair as well, I think.
Okay.
My phone number isn't in there, but it is, I just wrote it in, but.
Yeah, it's, I was, it's not in there.
Huh?
It's not in there, I saw that, yeah.
Trevor's making the annotations.
And this isn't Trip's email, but maybe it's just all goes the same email for the fire.
Yeah, it's a central.
It's a central, okay.
Nobody reads it, I don't think, but.
Our constable is still in Florida, isn't he?
Yes.
We could ask about that.
We're at the time to reappoint. We've had a vacant second constable's position for
Ever.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it goes, it goes back.
Ever. I think it might be a good idea to have a constable that's around for things developing.
The challenge is to recruit one.
Now, in your primary shelter there, Fred, under generators, the question, they do have a generator?
I'm sorry.
I think it was, it said yes on our generator.
Page five.
Well, it wasn't marked here.
Kind of highlighted. You see how the Y is highlighted? Am I on the right page?
What page is it?
Page five.
Yeah, the Y's in bold.
Yeah, they're hard to see, but, yeah, if you look at the Y's in the end, they're just barely bolded.
Oh, yeah.
There, so pets allowed. The bold is for no, but generators are Y.
Does the fire station have a working generator now?
What's that?
Does the fire station have a working generator now?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's split with the school, right?
Yeah, just put it in.
Oh, really?
Yeah, put it in last, well, what, spring?
Spring, yeah.
Spring.
Oh, it was fall, I thought.
Fall, maybe it was in the fall, I guess. We put it in the fall, yeah.
Old one, burned up.
Did we run wire for that? Did we talk about that?
They had to move it, yeah, away for some of the building safety code requirements. So we have generators, one for the water system, one, the big one with the weight house in the school, I think, are both on that one. Fire station has one. We've got one here, but the formal E O C, if we ever needed it.
Well, this is our primary E O C.
Our primary.
According to the plan, our alternate is Mervis, because they've got a radio system and big conference room and everything. Telephone lines, I think.
They got a generator over there, too.
They got a generator. They got like 10 phone lines coming in there. And we have a verbal memorandum of understanding that should this place become untentable for some reason, we can go over there. I remind them of it every once in a while. But as a tertiary, Carol and I, working off our kitchen table and our desks, work very well. We don't have to, like, pick up everything and bring it here. We would use this as an E O C if it was like a really big emergency and we needed a lot of people to coordinate various activities ongoing all day long. Then we'd activate this right here. But when it's on a scale of what we have right now, working at home works very well. Plus, we're trying to isolate.
Right, I was just gonna say, we want that distance, yeah.
So I would ask you if this was in, to your liking, to have this voted on, passed tonight?
I would think so.
Yeah.
You need a motion?
Huh? I think you should have a motion on it, I think, John.
I make the motion to accept the local emergency management plan as written.
Maybe with the updates?
With the updates.
With the updated contacts, I think, yeah.
A second?
Motion made in a second that we accept the local emergency management plan as presented to us. Any corrections or admissions? If not, all entertainers, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried. We don't have some names in on some of this stuff, that's all.
I get that stuff. Those are all ones, they circle them and
Okay.
I'm working blind. I didn't bring a copy for someone, no reason. And the wire diagram organizational chart that I gave you is an attachment to the L E M P.
We did have one of those filled out last year, Fred.
Yeah, well, we had to change, well, we had to change some of it because we have personnel changes. And the nature of this emergency needed an incident commander like last week. And since I was in the heat of it all, I put myself in as incident commander. Of course, you guys can, folks can change that if you wish.
No, thank you, Fred.
No, thank you. I mean
Do we need to do more?
No.
No?
No. The only other item I have, if you think we should move ahead with it, is a local jurisdiction request for emergency declaration. This is a request to the governor to declare Waitsfield in emergency. What this does for us is that it loosens up some resources. When I call Vermont Emergency Management and request certain resources, if we have this declaration, it's given a priority.
Well, is that point, Fred?
Well, you could argue both ways, but if we had it and something came up tomorrow, it might be really helpful. Otherwise, you folks would have to come back here. We might be one of the few towns that are doing this or asking for this, but because we are one of the few towns, if we had it and I put in a request for whatever, we'd be given priority. It's something you folks should discuss and see if you want to go to that next step.
Jeff, where are you guys at in that reference is the situation?
We are, right now, looking for a local declaration. We think that as of right now, things seem to be okay. Obviously, the mountain closing is a great help in that aspect because it limits the amount of people that are in the valley. We do know that there are second homeowners that are, some of them are choosing to quarantine here. But right now, we are, we feel that we're okay. We might relook at things towards the end of the week, depending on how things go, because literally everything changes, seems to be every six hours, if not sooner, so.
Well, I think there are a couple, three cases in the va, in the town.
Other than right now, there's only eight in the state, four, and there are four that are out of state or in, currently in the state of Vermont, so. One in Washington County, last I heard, that was it.
Yep.
And they will not give out that information as to where, unless it's specific to your location.
Can you elaborate what this means? What, what, what doing this would result in?
It would
Other than being first in line for aid?
Aid.
We're not closing the borders of the town, right?
No, we aren't.
Okay.
No, we aren't. I talked to the I C today, and that's something he does not want to do. What this would allow us to do is respond quickly should something come up. I'm pulling a blank, I'm sorry. It would, it'd be a proactive type of thing. If you folks decide not to, fine, we can look at it again later.
So what would be the harm not to?
Not to?
Is there any downside?
Yeah.
We might be one of the only towns in Vermont that did it, but since we've got a national emergency declaration and we got a state emergency declaration, to me it seems that the next step is to have a town declaration. It also is reassuring to people that we are being active, we're being proactive, we're on top of this situation.
Is there a downside that is not really reassuring, that it shows people that maybe we know something that's, that's, something's going on in Waitsfield, particularly in the town?
It's how it's perceived. You know, it's, it's what we put out for information, like, nothing's happening yet. Anybody can get the information of who's sick where by going on to the V D H website, vdh.org. So we're not hiding anything. I can't think of a downside, other than it might just sit there and be not used for any reason. We might go through this whole emergency and not need it, but if it's there, we have it.
What does it do for us, Fred, if, if, if we, what does it do?
What does it do? Well, the biggest thing is it allows us to get additional resources. If we ever got FEMA funds, for whatever reason, this would be a required document. It puts Vermont Emergency Management on notice that we're active. A lot of towns, I've been very fortunate with this town. They've been very supportive of emergency management. A lot of towns don't know how to spell E M D. We are one, one of the few that has a, a good working relationship with the select board and a team organizing in place.
Well, we owe that to you.
Yeah.
I think since we could institute this by telephonically, that, I, I'm a little bit with Brian. I hesitate to, to raise the alarm to that level. I, I think if somebody was here located at the town office and we all called in, we could vote this in real quick. Since I live the closest
Yeah, we could do it real quick.
Since I live the closest, I'm willing to be that company.
I have, I have to wonder if it isn't jumping the gun just a little bit. I don't know, but if we had a dozen people in town here that were, then I could see we might have a big problem.
Well, just us having this discussion tonight, if we needed it in the future.
We're aware of it.
I'd like John to have it within. Half an hour, we probably could have this thing if we needed it.
Yeah, and I see if we had a huge, if we had a bunch of white and orange plates streaming into town bumper to bumper, I could see going ahead and pulling the trigger on this. But so far, it seems to be a pretty metered flow. And I had a phone call today from a property manager who said that he has multiple Airbnb owners who have pulled their properties off the market to stem that kind of flow. And on purpose, just to acknowledge that we have limited resources here, which is really great to hear that people are, are plugged into that, so.
You're saying they pulled it up so we wouldn't have people coming in here so fast?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. I have noticed that the, a lot of the people that's got condos or houses that they've bought for skiing, they're full. There's no skiing, but there's a lot of cars there.
People have definitely been here. You can tell who's walking around, who isn't local. It's, yeah, people are here, but I, like I said, if it was a bumper to bumper flow, I would be nervous, but I don't, I don't see
I don't think we got that.
No, not yet.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I'd prefer to wait. I'm also available. We closed our office, so I need to be closer to John so he could be the guy to come down here and
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yeah, and if, when we do, if and when we react to something like this, then does it take effect immediately?
No.
Is it? No, so that's the other piece.
It's a request to the governor for a declaration, so there's a lag time.
Right.
But
What's your thinking, Neil? I think we should vote it in and let Fred handle it the way he sees fit. You don't think that if we had a major, if something happened, that we couldn't get a full Yeah, but I mean, we're here at the table and here's the document, why don't we, you know? Do we have that kind of an emergency? That's what bothers me.
I'm not saying we need this right now, but at least we'd have it voted in and ready to go.
If we do vote this in, would we need to put in the paper and put it, I mean, would it go out there to make people nervous, or? I know
That's a consideration you ought to think about, what Brian brought up. It's a consideration you want to think about. I don't know. I don't know how many people would ever find out that we, find out. It's open.
It's open, yeah. Certainly not full transparency, but I don't need a
Even if someone
Yeah.
Knew that we did, they probably wouldn't understand what it is we're doing. I am fine either way you go on this.
It just bothers me. It don't seem like we got, I know it's around, but do we have that kind of an emergency to alert, to, I question it, so.
So the process would be, we'd probably call an emergency meeting. We'd follow the protocols for warning that, which are basically do the best you can and provide direct notice, if you can, to anybody who you think might want it, such as, as the newspaper or others. Four of you could participate electronically. I think the way the guides from V L C T reads, all five of you could, as long as, say, I was here. I think it would be helpful just to have two of us here, so that there's a member of the body, especially for something such as the emergency declaration. Take people through it. We would do it via conference call. Part of the reason why you gotta have people here goes back to the same challenge we had, is that you have to have that physical location for people to participate. So we'd say, call in, we'll set that up, but we would be here to at least satisfy that requirement of having that physical location.
How, how would you warn it?
Yeah, we'd create a agenda, said, emergency meeting. We would try to post it in the normal spots. We'd send out through our email list, the website. We'd probably look to you, social media. We'd let, you know, Lisa and the folks at the reporter know probably right away. Maybe even just send it out to, to all media outlets to be doubly safe.
I'm probably the hardest one to get a hold of, because everybody else got, but I'm easy to get a hold of between six and seven in the morning. I mean, that's
This cord, this cord won't extend up into the woods where you are, so you'll have to come down.
Can't get that fire going.
Can't come to you.
We'll call Captain We'll call Capitol West if we really need to.
You'll have to come down to me.
Well, if, we just need a quorum, right? We just need three people?
You would need three and, yeah, I'd say have one present and.
And then there's a process though, once it goes to the state.
But this is asking the governor to declare this, and if it's not declared, then he won't do it. I mean, why wouldn't we have this in our pocket? I don't understand why.
It's a nice quiver for me. It gives, gives me more.
I mean, I don't see the people in the hereons because I've been to my house over many days, so I just want to take your lead and, you know, the information that you see on a regular basis. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't think this is going to scare anybody any more than we kind of are.
What's your pleasure?
I'd like to, I'd like to adopt it, but Fred have it.
You're making a motion?
Well, I mean, we got, we're up in the air about it. Do we want to do it or not?
I mean, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to adopt the local jurisdiction request for emergency declaration for Waitsfield, the town of Waitsfield, to be delivered to the governor for approval.
A second.
We've had a second, you've all heard the motion. Any discussion on that motion?
I'm just afraid it's going to be a distraction to the governor. He's got his plate full and he's going to see this come through, or his staff, and they're going to be, what's, what's going on down Waitsfield?
Yeah.
That's all.
Brian, you got any comments first?
Yeah, I guess I agree with John. If it does pass, I guess we should be really clear to the Valley Reporter that it's a, you know, cautionary preemptive move, just to cover our bases, but, yeah, I gotta agree with John. I think that if we did feel as though we had an emergency situation, the administration is taking this very seriously and they're not going to drag their feet while approving a local declaration.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
I guess as long as have it.
And no disrespect.
No, I have no problem with it at all.
No discount.
I have no problem.
My vote was very much on, you said, if you go the other way, Fred.
We're not shutting the door, I don't think.
No, absolutely not.
If I was really strong about it, I'd tell you I was very strong.
And I'll be the first guy to call it.
No, I'm perfectly fine. I, now that we've had the discussion, if something comes up down the road, you're briefed, you understand it better than.
Don't hesitate.
Fred knows he can get ahold of me if he has to, pretty easy.
Yeah. I appreciate, that's all I have, and I appreciate everything of your cooperation.
Anything else you need, Fred?
No.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you both.
We never acted on.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, I was gonna say, before we close the loop on COVID-19.
Yeah.
Do you want to take any action on some or all of the pieces in the memo related to shutting the building, canceling meetings? We'll work through this work plan and then also designating sort of a warrant review committee and the emergency expenditure authorization would be, would be embedded in that.
So if we approve this, the next Monday's meeting?
It probably would, we would maybe leave it as sort of an as needed if there's something we have to do. The item after, it's the only thing with an immediate sort of end of the month deadline with the V trans-related documents and keeps us moving forward with a structures grant that's kind of bundled after, it's really the more important thing. And then.
I'm sorry, I missed that. This means we wouldn't meet on Monday?
You wouldn't have to, we still could, and we'd set it up just the same way.
I don't.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just reading this paragraph that said, the board will meet.
Right, we would cancel everybody, but you're a different animal.
Yeah, even if there isn't a lot going on, we can attack this packet that we.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
But I think there's going to be stuff going on.
As far as the bills are concerned, Trev and I will be in sometime next week and they'll be out there for somebody to, will have to be written.
With regard to water billing too, Trev, I have plans to roll the meters and do that billing at the end of next week. Is that still something that?
I think that would be fine, especially if you do it end of the week, that's when we've, because of the way we're staffed, we'd be lighter in numbers, so maintaining distances and we'd still.
You're reading on the 24th, right?
And I need to discuss, when we do it next week, the repeater with the board.
Okay, yeah. No, I think there's some merit in keeping it as long as everybody's comfortable either getting all together, or if anybody has any qualms, we can set you up this way, this way. So it'd still be that we'd meet, it just made the, you make that decision if you can or want to.
Why else you got on that shortage agenda? It's nothing.
So, yeah, so.
You need a vote on this.
Just if you want to vote on the formal closure and then, I don't know, who wants to be the warrant review team? I don't know that we'll need, especially if we're meeting, but it couldn't hurt to, just to designate.
Darryl usually don't tell them, I find, too, home.
So the, do I see three that'll?
Sure, I can do it.
And three is just to, that way we've got a quorum that essentially says.
We just ratify it until, until the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we'd probably have them at the next meeting anyway, so.
Yeah, the idea would be, this would be if for some reason we needed it in between and then you'd ratify it later.
This is something too, that we can come in and sign at a random time if we need to.
Yeah, we could stagger here so you don't all arrive. And then are you okay with the expenditure authorization, the limit of 5,000?
Yeah, we're gonna adopt this whole thing.
If you adopt the whole thing, I'm just pointing out that you'd be giving Paul and I the ability to.
We did the 5,000 last night.
Shelter in style someplace, basically.
As a limit.
It might say car payments made out of this.
Go ahead, your motion?
Yeah, I make the motion that we accept the COVID-19 response basic outline with the caveat that we still meet in some way, whether it be telephonically or in person on next Monday or as needed.
Second. Motion made in seconded, you all heard the motion, any discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. That solves that. And we'll cover the other stuff next Monday.
Yep.
Unless we have, I'm sure your stuff comes up with this.
Yeah, you know, Jeff in the back said, this is one of those, we participated in a conference call at 2:00 P. M. on Friday, and I heard the governor's dress at 5:30, and things changed again on Saturday, and I just happened to be sitting at home. I looked and, oh, hey, schools are closed.
Right.
And then it kicked off this whole different.
Now restaurants.
Do we have any more on there?
Restaurants, right.
Uh, let me see, we did have, Tom Yeron, Yeron Supermarket is requesting that the shopping hours of 8:00 A. M. to 9:00 A. M. be restricted to those shoppers who qualify as high risk under the COVID-19 protocol. The request will not be strictly enforced, but would be greatly appreciated as a great service to those at greatest risk. In summary, the higher risk folks per the CDC, older adults, people who have had serious chronic medical conditions like heart disease, diabetes, and lung disease.
We need to act on that?
No, he's just announcing.
And then someone sent in a note that said, what's the downside of voting it in now? And I think this is in relation to the emergency declaration, so you've had some of that conversation, but we can follow up if they have questions. They advocated that you voted in, please. And then the rest of it is, we've got some of the normal, Fred had referenced, we're on a whole bunch of manuals, so while we've been sitting here, one from the Department of Health, one from emergency management, one from public safety, all saying similar things, but.
Now, I did notice that Troy had a basket or a box of toilet paper out there with a sign on it requesting that if you need it, take one. Please take one.
Toilet paper is the new Eddie Topper sip of sunshine.
It seems to be a big demand.
Anything else we need to deal with on this?
I think we're.
The bills have been broken.
So just the protocol on that, the whole board signs off on these?
Yeah. Yeah, reviews and signs. One of the things that was listed as number five, this ties into keeping us on track to both receive the annual highway aid and to be eligible for highway grants, there are two things we have to do annually, one's our T A 60, our annual financial plan. It says we need to spend at least $300 per mile, we spend $16,000 and change before you factor in capital. So you can see maybe that section's a little older, but that keeps us eligible for state highway aid. The calculations that are here come from the state, they look like maybe there's a slight adjustment in the highway aid, about $2,000 from year to year, but I think the last adjustment to town highway aid was ten to twelve years ago, so they tend to be small and they tend to be spare. It essentially says, here's what we're going to spend, here's what we're going to raise for taxes, here's the state highway aid. And they want it broken down into winter, non-winter, and major construction, so we try to do that with a note that says, here's how we actually do our budget, here's where you can find it. This has worked for a number of years.
Does every town do the winter, non-winter?
Every town that fills this out has to do this. Most towns will break it out a little differently. Some might have a winter maintenance line. Ours is broken into sort of, you know, staffing costs, then we have sort of the vehicle and basic equipment costs, and there's material costs and there's.
Well, Mike, you know, my question is, does face and fill one of those out?
Everybody's filling, yeah. If you want your state highway aid, you fill out your financial plan. And then the other piece is the certification of compliance with the town road and bridge standards we adopted, we revised set back in 16. This is certifying that we did that, that we still meet those requirements, included in the June 5th, 2019 state approved template, so they're working to update those. And we're certifying that we do have an up-to-date highway network inventory, just a reminder that we are going to do, RPC's going to do one for us this summer as well, so we're just filling out to say we're doing all of those things.
I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made in seconded that we approve the mileage, cost mileage reports for the state. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we have to sign all of this.
Yep, so for this, we'll send them around certification of compliance and then the annual financial plan, I'll send them different ways. Unlike the liquor licenses, there's no where you can sign to essentially say you voted no upon accident.
I don't know who would do something like that.
I will admit where they put the lines on those, it's counterintuitive.
Yeah, when you don't read it, it's even worse.
The declines on the.
They're open, right?
Just tell me why.
We could put the stickers upside down to get you to the right spot. I think that was the last sort of real business side of, we held everything else in case, we put exactly the session on.
I go, you did a good job this time, Darryl, I gotta give you some credit this time.
Do we know what Sandy was looking for, if you don't mind me, Chairman, just going back to the original?
No, I don't, I don't.
What Sandy was looking for to talk about on this timber harvest?
Yeah, we weren't entirely clear, and then in talking with Chris Loomis and Phil Huffman, it still wasn't entirely clear what the select board's role would be in that, so we'll try to clarify that, but the rules of procedure let folks essentially request time, and we tried to refine it and schedule it.
I suspect you want to do some logging.
We'll keep doing that, yeah. The materials reference maybe some changes to the timber harvest plan, but I can't, I don't know, maybe, actually, Brian, with some of the D I V experience, maybe there's something from that or.
Is there some unresolved business with that? Are we buying some trail easements?
I'm gonna check, yeah.
I owned that property at one time.
Thought we secured them.
It seems like there's something that was, that was unresolved.
We had to, well, it was something about the parking lot portion of it, I don't know if I got resolved or not.
I don't know, I'm just vague, but I know there's.
Quite a while there was a problem, and I, I don't know if we got that solved or not.
I know that these.
We'll try to clarify that too.
I know that these restaurants are closing for a couple of weeks, but do we want to take care of these liquor licenses so we don't?
I think we should.
So we don't run up against any deadlines or?
Yeah, they don't expire till the end of April. So midnight on April 30th, and so we would, I think at this point, hold them off.
I don't think we're hearing anybody's.
First meeting in April, then try to, if that's open, because we've got some that have to come in still, or at least may want to waive that provision.
You got that one? You got that one already, didn't you?
There's nobody brand new, so.
Nobody needs the speech.
Oh, yeah, I saw it twice.
You're good.
We all signed things.
Can I give you a blank check?
So if we can maybe work them into next week, we'll try that, but they don't expire till the end of April.
Okay.
Yeah, that was part of the calculus.
We need to cover the round table, we do that next month.
We would do that next month, yeah, we kept it.
Next week.
Simple, because after that much COVID-19, we figured it'd be a little.
All right, Jennifer.
How much is this for sale for?
Oh, my finger.
Five bucks for a teaspoon.
Five bucks.
Ten bucks for a tablespoon, rest is about, you can get for 50.
Is Sonia hungry?
Yeah, well, yeah, sign up a little.
Who's son dad?
Those first two signatures you talk about, give me hell.
That wasn't John, was it? Whoa.
I could almost read his.
Paul doesn't like my signature.
You got that one. Who didn't get this one?
Maybe down the other way. I haven't touched these recently, so they may be.
You can get those snotty, snotty-nosed little kids at home.
Well, I don't know, there could be some improvements here.
It's snotty-nosed little kids, what did I miss?
Let's see, if anybody in the state won't.
We have a going thing here, Brian, about the signatures.
Well, I didn't raise the bar.
You gotta be able to read them.